Recording in progress.
All to the regular meeting of the Real Deal City Council. Roll call please.
Mayor Garance?
Here.
Mayor Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
Close session, there is nothing to report out. Complete that word. There are pledges of interest. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph dump round. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda with consideration as the council directs, unless a finding is made by the two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Got anything?
Everybody doing good job.
Hand raised emails?
No emails.
Okay then, we will close the public presentation and move to the consent count. Are there any items the council members want us to remove from the consent count? I'll make sure to know you. Okay, well. Anything? Any hand raised email? Nothing? Okay then, we have motion, is there a second? Second, no motion in a second. Motion hearing four zero. The staff, report staff communications. Okay seventeen in our package, the manager.
Thank you Mayor Garance and members of the council. So as we're closing up our energy projects here at City Hall, we've encountered some issues, the contractors encountered some issues in terms of the final authorization for the Sunvolt battery system, which apparently cannot be installed in trios. And so they're, we're working on a change order with the vendor to return to the original battery solution, which was a Tesla, where you can stack up nine of those batteries on the wall. So there just be three here. But I didn't want to just make sure that the council is aware of that. The project is not completely closed out at this point. And we are looking to see what the schedule looks like to get the final batteries in place. In the meantime, the solar is working during the day. Even with the air conditioning running on a very hot day like today, the city is pushing energy back out into the grid. Very little amount when there's not such an intensive energy use at City Hall, it does push out quite a bit of power. And then also the generator system was installed along with fencing on the Davis Street side of City Hall. So the system should be able to operate independent of the power grid. And I believe that there was an event earlier last week where the power intended go off, but the city, you all remain on. So, so even with the battery system maybe some changes, the system is working quite well. With that, we are reviewing different strategies for future grant submissions over the coming years. One, one of the things I want to, you know, reiterate to the council, I know that you all understand this is, as grants often come out kind of on short notice, especially these days with very tight timelines for submission. And you're going to need to start to work on some future preparatory work for grant projects, particularly related to infrastructure. So a lot of that we're still working on in the wastewater field. We worked on that in the water field. But there are definitely some street projects we want to bring up and bring that up later in the meeting in terms of spending a little bit of city money to prepare kind of conceptual plans and documents and get public buy-in for those types of projects to, to make additional investments using federal and state dollars in the community. So I want the council, the staff, members of the public to think about maybe some changes in the community and things that, that you'd like to see, you know, physically changed, made safer in other projects and feel free to let City Hall know, let staff know what kind of projects the community would like to see. So with that, I will go ahead and return it to the council. We have reports from the city clerk, the chief of police, and others in the staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Woodall? Chief, and this one, I'm good job. Sorry, appreciate you inviting that.
Uh, I'm not sure that actually there because. Time to extend it another one.
Thank you. I just want to thank the police department because it looks like y'all have some actions. And I also, of course, it looks like we have closed this again on cases. So I want to thank you for that too. And that's it for me. Thank you. House member Wilson?
Yeah. On the website, I see your work in time. For centuries, we, are you able to add, are you able to put stuff on the website that exists at all? Doesn't work at all.
I wish you got it. Yeah, I think at this point the system is not working to our satisfaction. We want to import over to the, to the new website, which we have the design basically hammered out. And now it's going to be the content info. So we're going to be working on taking what is useful out of the website and placing it.
Do we still have archived all the old?
Yeah, so we have all of that material, so that'll be. Yeah, that'll be transferred over to the new site. There isn't going to be like a radical redesign of the site. It's basically going to look very similar, refreshed, and a little bit easier to operate and use.
We still have the weather station on.
So there will be a weather button for people to click on. It will be off of the front main page, but, but it will be a third link.
We go with the new company.
Civic Plus. Yeah, yeah, it's a different from the, from the current vendor. There, they do a lot of cities all over the, all over the country, from the east coast to the west coast. I'm trying to think, there are a couple of them that are done regionally and for whatever reason it skips my mind, maybe Karen remembers. Who is, oh, the County Fumbles is one of their clients.
Or San Rosado? Yeah, San Rosado.
San Rosado, there were a couple of other local ones, but I can't, I just can't remember all of them. The County Fumbles definitely. And they do, you know, cities of populations of varying sizes.
So just should just be better overall in our last.
It, it. It, it should be, it should be, it should be, it should be better. And it also should be redundant and, and a very good one.
Thank you.
The other question. So it's. I just, my question to Chief. Um, we have a notice in our box. Business was complaining about, I guess, quarter for homeless lady. Because people are out and, you know, like this. Are we able, are we able to do anything with that person?
Yeah. In short, she required a number of calls and services for the past couple of weeks. She actually was arrested last week for property. And so she went to jail and she was released, but I'm not sure where she came back from.
So she's not got her back in.
I can't say she won't come back in, I said she's not here right now.
But it's something the city had, I know in the past, we had issues with some of the. People doing different things on like public streets. They were parked and doing this and that, and they, they definitely could do about it because there, this public street, correct, if people were doing things. But then also some stuff about getting people to clean up their yards and stuff. They weren't doing it because they, it was a long drawn out process. Lately to get them to do it. And so that's my question is, Chief, are we able to deal with people like this? So that it's not a business to a business.
I think you talked about two issues, one is co-op wasn't it? And the other is some issues different of a person who was on public streets and public sidewalks. We can't enforce sleeping on sidewalks. However, we can address blocking the sidewalk for people to have access on the sidewalk. This particular female didn't want any services provided to her. We bought her sandals to walk in because she had refused. We offered her a bus pass out of town because she said she wanted to go south. But again, we can't force her to make any of those decisions. We can only provide the assistance for her to, you know, where it belongs. If it becomes criminal, absolutely, we can do something about that. Of course, any regulations that we have, but outside of that, it's pretty.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did think you mentioned. I was wondering, so if I understand we can't do anything, speaking outside of. But is there things you can do about open containers and drunk?
Yes, actually, there was a violation. So if we find somebody who is drunk in public, those are our legislative business. You know, we would judge each person individually. But, you know, when somebody is outside of the house, if they can go back inside their house, or somebody is being moved to the, that they can't take care of. So I'm glad we're probably in touch.
Thank you. Any questions? Any hand raised or email? Then we will close this item, thank you everyone. Now we will move on to special call items. Public hearing on cost recovery for the abatement of eight three three Pacific Avenue, page twenty-two in our pack.
And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our community services officer, Ms. Mary Clark.
Good evening Mayor Garance, the council members. I'm here to open a public hearing for the abatement that occurred April fifth Avenue on March eight, twenty-two. To recover the costs during that abatement. And you can receive any testimony evidence concerning the cost recovery for the abatement.
Thank you. Are there any questions, councilmember Garance? No questions. Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, great.
Councilmember Woodall? There, I had said the, did you get the question I asked earlier today?
No.
Okay. When we came back from the last training, you said that you found out that we could also relieve on their taxes. Okay, so is this one, and, but I thought it had been done on the other three that we've done. Okay, so is this one on the taxes?
So once this is approved, then I can go forward with the main process.
Okay, so that we will go forward with that. And can we circle forward with the other two?
Yes, I talked to, I arranged all that show and I arranged it to be.
Okay, cheers. Are there any questions? Any hand raised emails? Then I will ask for a motion to approve the finding and order while close the public hearing. That's not already, and I will now ask for a motion to approve the finding, the order confirming account and assessment for the abatement of least three three Pacific Avenue. I said, we have a motion and there's a second. A motion and a second. Motion hearing four zero. Finally, we will receive and file a recap of our five-year savings plan. City manager, that's page twenty-eight in our pack.
Thank you Mayor Garance, members of the council. I'm skipping, getting over to page twenty-nine is kind of the summary of the development of the five-year streets improvement plan that the council has approved. What I want to note on this in particular is that there's been a lot of progress on this, on this report. On the right column, you'll see a status update in the Excel spreadsheet with, you know, significant number of high-level projects completed or withdrawn. With the slurry ceiling, we are scheduled to have kind of this year's final project begin. They'll be starting the north end of the county. So I think Arcata and Cal Poly Humboldt on September twelfth. And so I wouldn't anticipate them getting down here until probably early October. It's possible they could come down a little bit earlier than that. But that's kind of the rough timeframe for when that project will begin with Dry Hill. And again, we're going to be covering quite a number of streets, including a portion of Wildwood Avenue. The Ogle Bellevue Drainage was one of the projects that we were hoping to complete in 2022. That has been delayed and we're pushing it to put it out for bid for the 2023 construction season. So this will probably be put out to bid at the end of the year or at the very beginning of the year. We'll see what the prices are in terms of that particular project. And then highlighted, and it doesn't quite show up, is the purple. They are the projects that are still outstanding on the five-year program. So there's additional story ceiling that needs to take place. That's primarily going to be focused on Wildwood Avenue and moving more towards the downtown for pavement preservation, long-term pavement preservation. Attached to those projects are typically some prep work, so patch, grind out some patching. There is Riverside North, which we're taking a look at, so putting into another bin package. The Northwestern Avenue plans, that's in the Humboldt-Riadell business part. Originally had a plan to elevate the roadway and, and widen it. However, looking at it, staff is, is going to be ultimately recommending on that particular project to just focus on pulver replacement and, and keep it relatively low-key, the road still functions. The most important piece of it is really the drainage and the, and the transfer of water. The other great news is that the US 101 Northwestern Interface requirements, it does not appear at this point in time. The city has costs associated with those improvements. And then Caltrans is planning on putting that into one of their regular maintenance regimes. You have noticed that north of Eureka in the safety corridor and other locations, Caltrans has gone in and extended their ingress and egress travel lanes on the freeway of Mid-City Motor World and break at industrial park in some other locations. So we're looking to see that Caltrans do similar work in that border, which is certainly an area where people drive very fast. And there is a concern about traffic. And then a part of the plan is also to develop some preliminary grant preparations for Pacific Avenue. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that afterwards. But I'm going to see if I can load up a very quick PowerPoint here to just cover the recap on some of the past few years of street work in the city of Riadell section. So. I apologize for the second board issues.
It's the. Just by accident, you know, but it makes sense. We're all the same, especially with maybe some issue. Yeah, yeah, so it's, I generally. I go most of the same. Yeah. Yeah, things that split up.
All right, well, we'll, well, we'll try to do is, is working through the system. I don't, I don't know what exactly is occurring, but I think the, the pictured files are too large for. So I apologize for that. But just recapping some of our, our prior work in the city of Riadell to improve street conditions to help prevent long-term deterioration, which obviously creates higher costs. One of the packages that we have rolled out is the slurry ceiling. One of the advantages of it is that it's relatively low cost. We are able to leverage partnerships with our allied agencies, the other cities, county, and then pool our financial resources and put out one bid to leverage contractors to come into the county to do this kind of work. Ceiling is actually very, very important for asphalt roads to capture deterioration early and make improvements to the road or prevent higher costs down the road. So with Riadell, what we have done is spent about $130,000 on preparing for patching or for ceiling by patching some of the worst alligator areas, that sort of thing. That includes crack ceiling and other types of activities. Try to maintain the, the continuity of the road, the consistency of the road structure itself, so slurry ceiling and striping. So together, those costs so far to the city have been about $144,000 not to the city. And then we have an upcoming project this year. We've seen some cost increases in the, in the bid amounts. So we're at about $214,000 for this year's project. Again, these help prevent longer-term costs down the road. They have actually helped save money down the road aesthetically. They improve the image of the, of the street. And so by the end of this year, we will have spent just under half a million dollars doing story seal type projects. And we still have a bit of ways to go in terms of helping to preserve, in particular, Wildwood Avenue, main thoroughfare of Riadell, and preparing for that work. So moving forward. Back in 2017 was one of our, and this is prior to the five-year road plan. But we did do some work, patch repairs and overlays in various locations that were consistently getting significant potholes every winter season. So that was a relatively small pilot project that the city did, including some repairs to the bridge abutments so that traffic over the 101 was a little bit smoother. In addition, the city did some additional patch repairs and overlays. Probably one of the nicer ones that you can see is on Ireland towards, towards center. The nicer ones that you can see is on Ireland towards Cent- towards Center Street and School. It's a short section of roadway that we knew just had to be repaid. And reconditions the rest of it, so to get a chance of. Being in good, being in a good condition for a slurry ceiling. And in twenty twenty, we worked with the human construction to do the lower firm Riverside walls. Drainage work on those streets and patch repairs on Painter Street. Hopefully those images show up pretty good. Twenty twenty one, we had the pleasure of working with S T Roads out of Reading, who did. A lot of work in on Aloha, Dixie, Oval. Rio Del and other streets in the in the community, mainly through overlays. But there was a pretty significant amount of drainage work that that we conducted that will help preserve and make sure those roads. Stay in good condition for a longer period of time. And then finally, this year, Riverside Cherry Orchard with our contractor. G R Sundar, excuse me. Really made a pretty impressive repaired Riverside Cherry Orchard Streets, so. By far our largest project to date. Each year, definitely scaling up the complexity of the projects and the amount of prep work and. Engineering work that goes up, but we've made significant progress on. The action plan. So if you go to the very last page in your packet today on page thirty six. Really recapping. Here we are at in terms of spending on street improvement projects. That the city has expended one point six, little over one point six million dollars in street improvements in the past few years. Through various contracts, you'll see the city of Eureka and city of Fortuna also listed as. Vendors, but those are the story seal project costs where they get channel through the. Individual cities who are sponsoring the bids for those years. So I think, you know, that's excellent news and a lot of progress has been been made in that regard. Moving forward, so recapping the. The past few years where we're at with the five year streets plans and where do we go from here? For the upcoming year in twenty twenty three, the construction. Out of the five year plan, you know, based on discussions with staff and kind of the availability of staffing resources. Our intent is to put out to bid for the drainage project of Oval to help continue to. Nurture that particular neighborhood and its repair. And but staff is also going to really need to focus in on these grant projects that we have, so we have. You know, close to three million dollars worth of projects, all with the. Requirements from the state of California. To accomplish. And so that includes the Eel River Trail. So by biking non motorized trail from Davis to Edward Street. We have our gateway modification project tree installation and. Landscaping in that particular project, we also have the dark car projects, which also is a basketball. So those are three kind of big projects that have a short timeline that have to be done this year. There's no real option in twenty twenty three this season. There's no real option to kind of delay those those particular projects, so. So staff needs time to be able to focus in on that. At the same time, we'll have better information on our. Current financial situation. Most of those dollars of the one point six million dollars are. Are subsidized funds. They don't come from street taxes. They come from the general. Of the city in order to accomplish those those projects, so we need to make sure. That the city has adequate reserves and that the city is in a good financial position to continue the investments in the streets. And then back to what I alluded to before, which is the need to really begin planning on future grant application projects. Obviously, there's been spending through the federal system. On the infrastructure plan and the. More recent. Funding that has come out and been rolled out through the federal government. And so we want to start having a discussion with the council about doing planning for Pacific Avenue. Basically, essentially behind City Hall and behind the fire department that stretch there. Which is very narrow and not the greatest condition, but yet sees a lot of traffic. Heavy truck traffic as well as traffic during, say, wildwood days and whatnot. And trying to develop a strategy to leverage grant money, to develop sidewalks and kind of recondition those areas. Another area of concern is Bellevue Avenue. So now on the far end of Bellevue is, I'm gonna see if I can screenshot again and not crash. Computer. Sorry, words, okay. So another area that needs attention is really Bellevue Avenue, so this is the. For those unaware of the location of it, is on the north side of town. The the situation is, we we have seen, practically speaking, a lot of pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic. On that stretch of road, there's really no avenue for those. Users of the road system to access those roads safely. So it is highly problematic. Pull up the image. Here, the roadways are relatively narrow. Probably eleven foot, just eleven foot travel lanes. And then no sidewalks, and this is actually probably one of the better sections of Bellevue. But heading down in this in this general direction, you can see that it's just a really relatively narrow. Street, so one of the one of the packages we'll be discussing with the council bring forward. Is is doing some prep work on some preliminary designs of what it would look like. Trying to communicate with the neighbors, get, you know. Some buy-in for for a project that would install, you know, curb gut or sidewalk and that sort of thing in that area. And of course, there's all kinds of different projects. Certainly, I want to encourage members of the public, members of the council to. Come to staff and identify this, because we're going to start working on on developing, and one of the things. Particularly with some of the recent branch funding rounds, since we're kind of running out of those projects that we have pre designed. So the Eel River Trail pre design was submitted for three separate grants. And finally, taught it on the last one. And. So the the more work that we do upfront, the easier it is for us to make application for for grant funding. And so with that, that kind of covers the the gist of just what I wanted to communicate to the council and just kind of open that dialogue. This is not. We're not looking to take any action today or tonight, but just open up that conversation and. And have it over the subsequent months in in terms of what what we're preparing, but our our action plan is now that we're nearing kind of the completion of the five year streets project. What is, what are the next projects? Some of the standing orders that we have from the council are not to pave roads. That so that we know are likely to have to be dug up because the infrastructure underneath the ground is failed. And needs to be replaced, so these are actions that the council can reconsider. If the council so desires, some of those streets include Far End and Oval. Second Avenue, obviously, probably one of the biggest challenges in the city, Elko, I believe. Elm, excuse me, Elm Street. But if those, you know, got solved, we pretty much have. You know, solve some of the worst issues in in the community in terms of the road network. So we're getting much, much closer to it, so. So with that, I will go ahead and return it back to mayor, see if there's any questions or comments of staff. Any additional direction.
Yes, just from my say. Where are we in the five year, when I work here?
We're in some three.
And so if I understand correctly, we're. Gotta kind of take a breather from that, so we can. Excuse me, so we can accomplish the grant.
Correct, so some of these remaining projects, like in particular with the slurry seal. Slurry ceiling, if there is another group effort, we would consider that at that time because there's relatively little. You know, we don't, we don't have to prepare the bid package. We just kind of participate with the other agencies. So that's relatively easy to accomplish. But yeah, what we propose is separate twenty twenty three, we can tap the brakes a little bit. And try to work on the drainage issue and then and then round out the others. In twenty twenty four.
And then the the other thing, so. The other, you mentioned that we were able to. Fund some of this, was that funding team, general fund, was that part of Major J?
Absolutely.
See, that's what we're looking to. It's gonna be on the ballot, this. Extend that lower lowering what we're asking, instead of one percent to. Three quarters of a percent, we're gonna want to extend that. So that we can do these kinds of things as we move forward, that.
Correct. Yeah, I would say, you know, Measure J, if that had not been passed in the original manner, you would, these projects would not have been accomplished. So some of the benefits of Measure J and Measure U. Have been investments that were made into the police department to modernize the police department and make sure it were. Do our best to recruit and build positions in the police department, so that is another major expense. That came up front and then and then really. The general fund has zeroed in on these street improvements, and so there would be really no way. To have accomplished this without measuring the J there. Cannabis certainly has has aided in additional funding, but you have to remember that Measure U came first, so Measure U came. At the end of two thousand fourteen. That was the funding that, you know, was needed to help preserve the police department, to help put the city into a position. To pursue cannabis as a revenue generating function, as a B. And I'm a development function for the city, and so at the same time, one percent. The, I think, because we've had relative success related to cannabis revenues. That much of it does seem to be sustainable into the future, that it is prudent that it is. Worthwhile to go ahead and lower the tax, because we have this backfill for cannabis. That has come in particularly since twenty nineteen to help move and continue to move projects forward and see.
But we're also seeing that the cannabis has kind of stalled down. And so the so the major J is. It's a big, it's a big deal, but we have that go forward.
Correct, so Measure J is a much more stable financial resource, I think. I think the council as well, where with cannabis, there's going to be waves. There's going to be good years and there's going to be bad years into the future, so there will be other good years hopefully. In the future, there will be other bad years. And so it becomes very difficult for us to plan and do street projects that you have to plan out multiple years in advance. To really pull off without a steady revenue stream to accomplish those those projects. So it's really vitally important and maintaining, by the way, the the police department, which. You know, is a significant responsibility, the costs for providing those services, everything from dispatch. Compensation, insurance, all of those go up every year. And so we have to make sure that that we are funding those responsibilities as well, so it's a. It's a fund that has a lot of competition for those resources. But every single dollar that's in the general fund gets spent in the community.
I was getting close to the November election time. Is there a possibility that we would have another one of these public failings? Go out to make citizens aware of the shout out for the.
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll be putting out information to educate voters on what this new measure, which the new measures. Will be called Measure O. So Measure O information will be forthcoming, we're starting work on that, putting together a package. And then I suspect some of the employee groups will also be stepping forward to make advocacy for. For Measure O's passage.
I appreciate staff doing this, to make all the stuff come to be, thank you for that.
Thank you for the presentation. I get a lot of positive feedback on the painting. I mean, that's what people seem, they makes them feel good. Except for the people at the very end of. If you need people to go to or get public buy-in for things, projects like this, you know, I will do it. I agree it. But other than that, no, no questions, thank you. And I.
Yeah, I think, you know. Specifically to Oval, there are a number of problems. It's probably one of the more difficult streets. In that there's pretty significant drainage issues there. The biggest killer of any asphalt street project is water. So we need to improve the conveyances for the water. Which the council offers us to enter into an agreement with with church engineering. To kind of finalize and get plans ready to put out to bid. So I think we're getting, we're very close to closing out that portion of. Planning for that particular project. And then we'll be working on putting together a bid package. So assuming that we get the drainage done, there's still other problems, including underground infrastructure. So water and potentially sewer projects that need to be done out there. So in prior discussions with the council, the one of the, one of the. Direction staff received was to come up with a list of of streets where we did not believe that there would be a need. To immediately dig up the streets. To fix that infrastructure, and so that is where the five year plan was based off of. Was coming up with that list of of streets where some of that infrastructure was not planned and water C I P, which is the. The most information really that we have at this point in time. But there are certainly other actors out there, and so physical gas, electric, A T and T, other cable utility providers. We're also in discussions with another fiber company. Needs to move a line along freeway. And so, yeah, so in all honesty, I don't know that we can one hundred percent ever guarantee that. Once we pave a street, it won't ever have to be done. Because gas leaks happen, the gas lines are underneath the street. And so, so it becomes a question of if that, you know, the council removed that directive, we took another view of. Streets like Bellevue or Second. Then maybe we could start to put together bid packages, assuming that we have the finances available to work on the streets. And work on them before the infrastructure under the ground gets worked on, so. I wouldn't recommend that for Oval until the drainage is taken care of. But once the drainage is taken care of, then it becomes a similar street to to Elko, to Second Avenue where. And so in the end, as long as the streets are patched and repaired and. And compacted correctly, some of these patches. Uh, some of these patches really shouldn't be that intrusive on a street project. So. Um. So it's something to consider, and we can certainly chat about it, uh, if you would like. Um, and I don't know if Randy has anything else to add on that particular one, but.
Mayor Council, so on my table, this is, it's. We put it off, we have the law line, the special project, that's. Looking back on the accountability for how many times it's now there, actually, it's a lot of people on that stretch of road that's very minimal. But there has been other issues, you know, for power or. Uh, that one particular one service line, so that's, okay, this spots here and there. We would chair a full sheet, do a spare, just small spots. So if you were to reconsider possibly pay that, uh, you get. Pay it and then just have all of that in mind that there will be a potential that we won't be digging it. And then eventually the bay line is out there. Place, but, uh, other cities do it all the time, where you just have a. Pathway where the main line sticks in, make sure the patch is done, and if I say. The patch is, you should hold it pretty well. It's that way you get that part paved and in the meantime that. Waiting for it to happen, you're ready for it. So you might as well start applying it right again. There's a, it just manage for not getting no traction on first. But on the other part. How many years are you gonna wait for it to do this? So.
Good, so answers. I appreciate that. Hey, um, so further any hand raised or emails? Any question? Okay, then I think we can close that item. Thank you for the presentation. I'll move on to, uh, council reports. Okay, heard. Okay, I got some reports. So let's see, I went to a Cal City's Redwood Region meeting down in Point Arvino. We heard from California Offices of Emergency Services. Um, about funding opportunities to mitigate potential disasters. Is that how you would sum up that? Yeah, okay. Um, did that. It was super interesting and always nice to connect with other Redwood region folk. Um. We had a unification, welcomeability and pride meeting. Two weeks ago, last week, um. Always a good meeting too, very, uh, beautiful, positive and uplifting. We did discuss maybe doing, uh, water tank year hole. Which could be cool. Um, and lastly, I had a rehab meeting where we heard from an organization that does farmers markets. Food Unites Us at Cal Poly Campol. And partially the, um, the growers association, I believe, not the alliance. Um, one of those food and one of those canvases is a good food one. But it got me all fired up on farmers market. So, um, yeah, I think there's no reason we don't. I couldn't have, or really lost the farmers market at some points. That's my report. Thank you. I mean, I was wondering if you wanted to be your chamber. I did go to the ship. Oh, God, I have four meetings. Can you report? You were there, right? I didn't make notes for that one.
Oh, I I just thought.
I was there. Why don't we talk a lot about Christmas decorations? Yeah.
Christmas decorating.
And recap the Wildwood days and.
And the, uh, the kiosks.
Yes, and the snow. The Marley Snow Memorial Rock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just, no, you're right. I completely blanked out a meeting. Thank you, children. Okay, um. I have a. H T A meeting tomorrow and, um. I have the fire department meeting this Thursday, but I was talking to the. Fire department just today, and they had a busy. Weekend. They must have had over ten calls. I mean. In the area out of McCann, um, thirty six, they've had a lot of calls. And they're short handed. So you know anybody that wants to join volunteer fire department? About it. Thank you.
I don't really, uh. These have, well, we have a. They study, I may have a lead there. Actually. Oh. So I only have a thing to report. I have a question, I didn't ask you any. Uh, staff reports. A while back, a couple, three months ago, we had a council meeting. Pretty heavily to a, a cannabis fair in the county and the city. Is that, is that still happening? Is that? Disappeared.
That was the program that has not submitted, uh, a, a proposal, and I believe the. Date to have submitted one was, it's already passed with the original. Date unless the chief knows of the recent submission. Yeah, so I I don't know if murder advisors is still interested in pursuing, uh, that, uh, that event. Uh, but I think their original scheduled date was sometime in September. Yeah, so they would be required to, you know, submit, um, an application at least thirty days in advance, not for the approval of the chief of police. Uh, so we have not received one.
Uh, thank you.
And, um. Council member Carter reported all the two meetings that I was, so I don't have to report on them. So, um, I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn? So there are motions, there's that, you said it. Will be adjourned until September twenty.